Time being 5:03, I call to order the April 13th Special School Committee meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. Any individual who also wishes to record this meeting must notify the Chair in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F. So I'd just like to start by thanking everyone for being here, whether in person or watching from home. One of the main responsibilities of any school committee is the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent. We recognize this is a tremendous responsibility and impacts the district as a whole. A reminder for everyone, though these interviews are public, there will not be an opportunity for public comments or questions. I also want to thank everyone who attended the April 7th meet and greet sessions with Mr. Jagir and for your thoughts, concerns, and questions raised during that time. I hope you also took the time to fill out the survey that was emailed to you. So just a quick recap, the school committee, after consulting with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and reviewing a range of options, the full school committee chose to unanimously move the process forward to a final interview with Assistant Superintendent Lucas Jagir. Mr. Jagir, most of us here at the table are aware of the work you do in the district currently, but tonight we would like to get to know you a little better. So we have a total of 14 questions, so that's two from each school committee member. At the halfway mark, I figure I'll do a quick time check to make sure we're following schedule, as I know we have a hard stop due to town council at 7:00. So being mindful of the time, Mr. Jagir, I would love to give you an opportunity to provide your educational and professional background and what led you to apply for this position.
Great. Thank you very much and to the folks, we televised, it's at home, so I just want to thank those tuning in, and I want to thank everyone who showed up in support tonight or to hear what I have to say and why I'm interested in. I recognize that we've worked together for some time since you've been elected or from the previous committee, but I think it's important to explain who I am, why I want this position, and my experiences that have led me to this part. So I just would begin by just talking about my leadership story. I think it predates my time leading in education, and it started right out of high school when I joined the United States Marine Corps. I did that out of a sense of wanting to belong to something greater than myself and just a commitment to a deep sense of purpose that when you commit to something bigger than yourself, you can have tremendous impact. Through those experiences in the military, I really learned a lot about leadership, and I grew and developed in ways that really helped me. And after I got out of the Marines or during that time, I started to study and found my way to education. And I feel like every teacher is a leader of their classroom in many ways in respect, so there was some translation there, and I took that opportunity to learn more. I experienced my own educational disruption. When September 11th happened, I was completing school and was mobilized in support of operation during Freedom. Upon return, I had to finish my student teaching, and at that point I had moved back to this area, and I had an opportunity to work, do my student teaching, and then I was hired as a one-to-one aide. And I bring that up because that experience allowed me to support a student and travel through a school day, seeing five different teachers educate the student in five different ways with different strengths and ways in which they supported to meet the student's needs. I think it gave me great perspective of the student experience, literally traveling every day for a semester. It was one of the greatest educational opportunities I had. From there, I worked with that student and felt like there were opportunities to engage beyond just the classroom. So with the parent's support, I volunteered to work with that student to join the wrestling team, and that student was just thrived in that environment. I bring that up because I just saw a tremendous opportunity for kids, and I thought, wow, this is what education's about. To go through a day and feel cared for by the people who are teaching you, and then extend your day and be with other students who share in a shared experience and are working towards a common cause was just what it was about, and I fell in love with that idea. Midway through the year, the coach had to leave, and because I was the adult showing up every night, I was appointed as the coach. Little side note, but I had never wrestled and I had never coached wrestling, but I did my best in that role just to keep the program going. I wasn't hired back after that season, but I don't know if I should share that in an interview. But at any rate, the opportunity came in Franklin, a brand-new middle school was opening up called Annie Sullivan, and I interviewed for that position and was hired as a sixth grade teacher. Carrying the perspective I mentioned, to be able to teach and educate in a new school where we charted our own course, we had to really develop our own mission, vision, and values, and it certainly was from the ground up. It wasn't just because of a compliance exercise or something we had to submit, but we needed it to guide the work. And I learned so much, there's so many great educators there that I learned from to kind of develop that skill of teaching. The opportunity to move into a leadership role, I was able to draw on my previous experiences through the coaching opportunity, but certainly from the Marines, and I was an interim assistant principal. And I think about that experience now, and moving from a colleague to the teachers in that school to becoming an assistant principal, I felt such support. And I think every teacher there just handled my leadership. You know, there's always growing pains as you kind of grow and you test the skills that you have to do the best you can for kids and for families and for teachers, and they certainly supported me through that development. I think it helped me to grow and take risks and really try to move things in ways, and I felt like there was trust there that helped me. After that experience, an opportunity at Franklin High opened up, and I had conversations about that and really wanted to kind of move in that direction and see what it would be like for continue that secondary ed experience and leading. And I was fortunate to be hired as the assistant principal at Franklin High School, and it's a different style of management. One thing I benefited from in the middle school is I had the staff that I worked with. In the high school, I didn't know all the staff, but I certainly had the support of at least a third of the kids because they had traveled through the middle school. And any teacher knows, when you see kids that have moved on from your elementary school, later on in life, they see you, and it's usually a pretty positive experience. I think I benefited from the grace of the students in that particular example. That experience really helped me to just develop my range of how to manage kids, and you handle kids differently at different developmental levels. But from sixth grade teaching to six through eight, being an administrator, and then nine through 12 certainly broadened my perspective and experiences. The opportunity to lead a building was certainly something I was interested to do, and one of the neighboring communities had an opening for principalship, and I had applied and moved on and was fortunate to be selected as the next principal of that school. During my time there, I had relied in my leadership career on relationships in a way that I had developed them, and people either knew of me or had worked directly with me, and I leaned on that. When I went to another community, it allowed me, it really slowed me down to really establish new relationships with people. And I feel like that particular experience really developed skills that I had not, I knew I needed to develop. I feel like one of my strengths is building relationships, but certainly it allowed me to do that and lead and meet people and figure out what the why and why we're doing what we're doing and not make assumptions. And we did some phenomenal work there at that high school, really developed, through the help, I had a supportive superintendent who really helped to allow me to grow with the staff and move in certain directions. We developed a flexible schedule block for our high school. We implemented financial literacy starting in eighth grade. We were able to really revamp the program of studies and add multiple components to kind of build out that particular program. So that was great, and I'm proud of the work that we did during that time. After that, an opportunity to return to Franklin had become available, and I had done a lot of hard thinking, we were doing some phenomenal work, and the opportunity to return to Franklin, where I had spent the majority of my career, approximately 15 years, was really something where I feel I call Franklin home on a personal level. I'm raising children in this community, and I really saw an opportunity to come and lead and continue the work that I started. But having left, I think I developed other skills that positioned me well to come back and try to lead that work. So I felt I was fortunate enough to be hired back as assistant superintendent, and I've been here for the last four years. So why I do this, I just would hit on, I wake up every morning and I think about the sunrises. I bring my own kids to school often and drop them off in the line, and I see kids get out of cars, I see kids get out of buses and vans and enter our schools. And students of all varying ability, socioeconomic background, some have tremendous advantage, some have challenges, some have trauma. We have students who, you know, I met with a family a few weeks ago who fled conflict in Afghanistan and are raising children in our town. And I also have a parent who is a multi-generational Franklinite who's been here and whose parents and grandparents and great, they all come to Franklin to be educated and get equal access to a phenomenal education that our teachers and our principals and our staff provide, and the only requirement is that they call Franklin home. And I think that's tremendous power that we have to do right by kids, and it motivates me every day. And I will say, you know, passion, I mentioned this in the faculty forum that I had around passion and purpose, and at times, passion can be hard when things get hard. And I think when that happens for me, I think about something I had a gunnery sergeant tell me at one time was around truly trying to lean into purpose, why we do this. So for those reasons, I think that's what gets me through, and I think that builds resilience. And, you know, I try to model that when I can with folks close to me as well. So I'll stop there, but I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and it's not lost on me, the tremendous responsibility a superintendent has, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to meet today to discuss my candidacy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go down the line. Camille, if you would like to start?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank you as a fellow veteran for your service, and I would like to admit, although my father, mother, four brothers would kill me, I was in the Army, and we all tease each other, but the Marines, you're all are, you're top-notch.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks. What are three major challenges facing Franklin, and how will you approach them?
So, great question. I think the challenges ahead of us, I think about, there's probably, there's multiple areas, and I think we have to prioritize which ones we have. The first one that comes to mind, I think about are the mental and behavioral health of the students in town, and how are we continuing to support kids in a variety of ways. I'll talk a little bit later probably about my goals regarding our rollout of some of the goals that we've started with the multi-tiered systems of support and how that ties in with not only the academics, but the behavioral pieces. But I think we have kids who, you know, who have lived in our community and gone through school through the pandemic, and I don't think that the pandemic is the sole reason for the mental health of our kids, but it's certainly played an impact. And as we continue to move forward, we have to look at ways on how we can support kids. We've recognized and seen behavior that it's clear that we need to take a step back and not make assumptions that the eighth graders who are walking the halls today received the same amount of feedback over the last two years that eighth graders might have four years ago. So without assuming that, how can we start to work backwards and help support all kids in a variety of areas, but certainly around expectations and learning how to interact with one another? I think we also have some budget concerns that we need to think about. When I think about our current situation, you know, our town brings in roughly three to three and a half million in revenue from tax, and I think about typically, schools get between 1.7, 1.8 of that money. And when I think about the 2.5% that we spend, that goes very quickly when you think about tuition and you think about transportation and salaries, it goes quick. So right now, we're advantaged through, as you've heard, and we've all sat through many of the same meetings, but for the sake, we're advantaged by some of the relief funding available to us, but I think that will come to an end, and we've been discussing that at different school committees. So I think that's an area that we will have to navigate and confront in future years. And just hearing the support of the school committee and how we'll navigate that, I think the role of superintendent is to put forward plans that discuss, you know, how we spend money, right? Disclose that and be transparent about that. How we also invest in programming for our kids is a huge piece of it, and ultimately provide information to the school committee and lead through the budget development process. Another area, I'm a member, I'm sitting on the Space Needs Subcommittee, not as a member, but certainly a participant. Those have just started, but I think that's another challenge and area that we need to confront and look at. And I say that, I also wonder about opportunity through that, and I think that's come up in a few conversations, but certainly looking at our enrollment, looking at the space we currently have, looking at, we had a conversation last night about other options that are out there related to space and needs and the age of our schools and the condition of our schools. So those are just three areas that I think will need to be continued discussion, there needs to be continued discussion and be planful and thoughtful about how each of those areas moves forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, build off of the budget concern. So FY '25 poses significant financial concerns to our community. There are anticipated expense increases within the town's budget, and as you alluded to, the school department will no longer have access to ESER funding to supplement its own budget. What will you do over the next two years to avoid significant budget cuts in FY '25, such as a teacher layoff?
So another good question. My response to that is, one, obviously, as we evaluate our budget, the first thing we need to really look at is, are we able to support the current programs and systems we have in place? We are at a point where we need to be reevaluating all of our systems as we come out of the pandemic and looking at how we're supporting kids and in what ways structurally, you know, who's, who do we have in our organization and how are they supporting kids across levels? I think about, you know, one thing that's come up before, looking at our numbers and looking at the size of our classes and looking at our enrollment projections will play a role in that as well, making sure that we have adequate staff to support all of our kids and all of our classrooms. We've also talked about support services, the needs of our students are increasing. So the tighter our systems are around those areas, and I think about our tier-one instruction, I think about tier-one from a behavioral standpoint as well around setting some of those expectations and educating kids, we start to tighten up those particular pieces. Nobody wants to be in a situation where they have to lay off teachers or have to notify teachers that it's a potential like we had a few years ago, and then be in a situation where you're rescinding that and having them come back. I think being fiscally responsible over the next three years and paying close attention so that we can try to avoid further cuts would be important. But I also want to just recognize, you know, there is a funding component to this as well. There's a funding issue that we must face, and I say that honestly because I live in town as well, I pay taxes here and all of that, but I think we, the role of the superintendent is to make sure that our programs are high quality, we're supporting our students, we're efficient, and we're fiscal stewards of the money that we do have, and continuing to look at that and how we spend our money, I think positions us much better when people see kind of how we're framing and supporting kids in a variety of ways, and it's very clear on the outcomes. And I think that comes down to planning as well, which I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think being clear with our plans would be, and having a very clear strategy is going to be really important.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lucas. Appreciate you coming here and sharing your thoughts with us. So my question is, what aspects of the superintendent role will be the most challenging for you, and how will you close those gaps?
Great question. I'm fortunate, I'll just say, I'm fortunate, part of the draw of this position is coming to work with the team of people we have in our district, really strong, strong people. An area that I haven't led is from a superintendent seat would be the budget development process. I've sat through the budget development process as a principal, as an assistant superintendent, but to lead through that, and I think that's an iterative process, and we're clear on kind of how that rolls out, and each town has a very similar timeline for how they move that, but that will be an area that I'll need to continue to grow. I plan to close those gaps. We're very fortunate to have a business manager who is very strong within our town, but certainly I led the budget review process through a zero-based budgeting model as a principal, and it's a smaller version of that process, but certainly there are other considerations when you start thinking about a superintendency. So I feel advantaged being the assistant superintendent and having some of the information in living and sitting through the meetings that would help in a transition, but certainly that would be an area that I would want to continue to grow in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lucas, for taking the time to be with us here. We really appreciate it. My question is, what is the accomplishment that has been made in the district during your time here that you're most proud of, and what is the most important area of growth that you believe needs to be addressed in the coming years?
I think I'm most proud of the work we've done with our social-emotional learning back from 2018. We assembled a district-wide committee, stakeholders from all schools, administrators from all schools, and looked for ways to try to continue the great work that had occurred before I returned. But certainly what we did is we were able to develop a shared understanding of what social-emotional learning is across our schools. I think that benefited us when we had the shutdown, because we had already laid the foundation for a lot of that work. We use the CASL Competencies, which is a research-based framework of basically relationship skills, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making. So kind of those five tenets, we had gone through a competency of the month where the whole district committed to that. You may remember seeing that, we pushed out information to families, the Try-To Challenge might have come across your emails at one point, but certainly trying to develop our strategies. And the way we rolled that out was, one, to explicitly teach some of these skills, right? Explicitly. But then also, we prepared and trained teachers on how to infuse these into lessons. So if you're a teacher, an English teacher, and you're looking at your writing prompt, it might already be there. A lot of teachers discovered that, this is really just me just realigning my thinking because I've already put a writing prompt out about a chapter of a book that they're reading, but I'm already asking some questions that cause reflection for a kid to think about self-reflecting. So that work and the team, I'm speaking to it now in this interview, but it was certainly a team goal that I think we're all proud of for accomplishing, and I think it positioned as well as we went into the pandemic, and teachers provided some of those lessons and really built connection, and it was already an operationally-defined idea, and a lot of work went into building those resources. So that's one area that I would speak to that I'm proud of, of the work we did. Was there a second piece to that question?
And what is the most important area of growth that you believe needs to be addressed in the coming years?
I think an area that we want to continue to focus on, as you know, our district improvement plan is a multi-year strategy. We last updated it, it was 2018 to 2022, which is the date. We're due for a review. I think the goals, there's some real merit to continuing goals that address social-emotional well-being, right, of our students and staff. I think there's a goal around engaging in rigorous curriculum, right? High-quality instruction and then communication. So I see opportunities in all those areas. I also wonder about what, after engaging with our team, where are some other areas? And I think the clearer we can get through our strategic planning about what we intend to accomplish each year and how and who and when, the clearer it gets, and what are those measurable outcomes? I think that would be an approach I would bring to this position to help move our district forward and work with our leaders who do phenomenal work, but certainly I see an opportunity there to get clearer on some of those pieces, so.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Jagir. Glad you're here. I've enjoyed working with you over the last couple of years and am feeling lucky that you're a candidate for this position here.
Thank you.
As you know, the schools don't exist in a vacuum, and we are part of the town. So how would you work with the local municipal officials to generate support and trust for the schools?
Once again, I think being, having a very clear plan and really well-defined goals for the work that we intend to do and plan to do is one area. Making sure we have lines of communication that are open, not just with the town's officials, but our town and our community. Our communication goal is due to receive a revamp at a very basic level. I think the communication piece is probably an area where we can leverage a lot of support if it's done well. I think we need to control our own narrative on what great things are happening within this community and in our schools, and there's opportunity there to look at everything from very basic, the website, which I'm sharing in an interview, like that sounds very basic, but I do think how usable that is, and also our frequency of what we're communicating and what's happening within our buildings and schools. I think giving people that consistent, predictable information and possibly, look, I don't have all the answers, but look at innovative ways to communicate with families so they see the great work that's happening. I think positions us well as a district and really helps us have a narrative out there that we are proud of and that we want people to see that's out there. Also, community relations, I've done a lot of work through the different community-based groups that we have. I'm on the Substance Abuse Task Force, as you know, and our School Wellness Advisory Council, bless you. I see opportunities to develop others that are authentic to address some other needs that we potentially have, and maybe look at our goals and look at how can we engage our community in those ways. I'm really proud of the work that we do in those groups as well, and we talk about that each meeting, but certainly those are some ways, I think leveraging those partnerships is very important, particularly in this role.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Jagir. Thank you for interviewing for this, and thank you for your service also. What would be your goals for the first 180 days?
Great question. I think actually that a parent asked a similar question at the parent night, and I said, actually, the first 180 days, I'm fortunate to be in the district where the transition planning, regardless of my position for the future, is already beginning, we're already thinking about next year. So that's what I would say is, our planning schedule, we're actually in the process, and one of our goals is to back up that process and engage our principals in some of the district overarching goals sooner in the spring, and then by the time school ends, have more clarity and help our principals so that they know and they're part of the process for how we structure our goals for the year, and then it gives them the summer to be working on those school-based goals. So that planning's already happening. I'm fortunate to have worked in this community, but certainly, I think as, if I was selected in taking on the role of superintendent, I would want to re-acclimate or work with our principals through this role and really start to schedule out, like I'm coming from a different lens now, I have a different responsibility as a leader, and I think when you approach the job, I'd want to be visiting with the lens of a superintendent and a leader because I think they're different than what my assistant superintendent role entailed, and I wouldn't want to make assumptions that it's the same. So I think there's work, and I think I'd be looking at things differently and wanting to meet with our principals to walk through our schools from that lens and be a part. The other piece I really am interested to do is look for ways to leverage student voice and develop some student groups that work at each of our levels, and try to do that in an authentic way that is connected. I know through the School Wellness Advisory Council, having students consistently on those boards or on that council, and in the Substance Abuse Task Force, having students, you develop a different relationship than you will if you just walk a hall and meet kids, or if you just have a focus group. Those all have an intention and a purpose to them and should occur, but I think that third leg is an area I'm interested to learn more about and how we can make that happen authentically and maybe wrap it around some shared goals similarly to how we do things with wellness and with substance abuse prevention, so.
All right. Let me take a drink of water now.
Thank you.
Special education is a particular challenge because of the complexity of the rules, service, needs, and student and parent concerns. When you assess the effectiveness of our special education programs, what are some of the criteria you use?
So, there's a few things. So when we, special education and student services in general is a very large, makes up a large frame of what I'm thinking about. An area that I rely on is we're fortunate to have some really strong leadership. An area that I rely on is we're fortunate to have some really strong leadership in the special education department. I know she might be behind my left shoulder, but I think we're advantaged by having some strong leadership. Paired with a real commitment to the external reviews and audits that take place where we get some tremendous feedback in a variety areas, but for the example of this, the CPR review, a coordinated program review where we reveal, it often will reveal some feedback in areas where we can improve. Mrs. Morano and her team take that very seriously. I think as superintendent, you need to be super involved. We've been fortunate, and Dr. Hearn's been involved in supporting these efforts and supporting that. And I think that's something that the community and our staff could expect of me if I was in that role. So I think some external validation. And internally, we have so many professionals and the community. We have a CPAC. We have parents who will come in daily to meet with our families and support, in support of our students. I draw, I go back to that original experience I had in education as a one-to-one, and I think back to the parent partnership that was developed to support that student. I've seen so many partnerships develop in my time here when I taught, when I was an AP or a principal in another district. They're just important roles. So those are areas. So we don't just rely on compliance reviews to find out what we need to do better. That's an iterative process as well, and I think it's one that we take seriously. People often talk about Franklin and the special education. I know that space with our programs is something that we're continuing to look at as well. We're fortunate to keep so many of our students. I go back to my, that why, and have our kids walk through those doors, and we're fortunate. And I think we need to continue to, to continue to really look at that work and reflect on how can we best support students and what types of, what types of resources and supports do we need to move forward? And I think we're, we would continue that work.
Thank you very much. All right, so just being cognizant of the time, all right, so 5:35. All right, so everyone take a drink, take a deep breath.
You have drinks for us?
And we'll start with the second round of questions. We have plenty of time before the town council meeting starts. So Camille, if you wanted to start us off?
Sure. So my first question was about challenges in Franklin, and my second question is, what are three opportunities in Franklin and how will you maximize them?
So I think coming, entering this role, I feel advantaged by kind of knowing a little more than I might if I wasn't. And I see tremendous opportunity at all of our levels. An opportunity we're currently engaged in, and it was referenced briefly before, was really trying to look at partnering with colleges. I won't use the college right now, but around concurrent enrollment, or it's called early enrollment. There's an opportunity there for students in our buildings to take classes. We have AP, it wouldn't go away, it wouldn't be impacted, but the opportunity to have students enroll in college coursework, but taught by our Franklin teachers and submitted and continue to build and get some of those college credits prior to graduating. When done well and rolled out strategically with a plan and with teacher buy-in and really to move that, it can be really successful. So that's one area of an opportunity. I also see opportunity for us to really look at our programming as we move forward. I know that, as we talked about, obviously, trying to make sure that we're fiscal stewards, so not every opportunity costs money, but certainly looking at ways in which we can infuse different programs, like financial literacy, as I mentioned earlier. That's an area where if I had only known about compound interest as a young Marine, I would have, you know, and probably would have made some better decisions along the way, but I learned it pretty quick. So I think there are opportunities there as we continue to look, look ahead. Also, we currently, at each of our schools, are advantaged by having some really strong leadership and innovative programming of how we work with, work with our leaders to provide students with opportunities within the classroom. I think about plans to move forward with some potential advisory models that could move forward would be an advantage to our kids, but also our community as well. And I think as we start to look at space, I don't have the answer to it, but I would want you all to know that opportunity in anything we do, I would consider myself someone who tries to look for opportunity even through challenges or with information that we're kind of mulling over is, you know, where can there be opportunities to continue to grow in ways that help all of our kids? You're welcome.
According to the Department of Education, one in five students report being bullied at school. How do you view the role of the superintendent as it relates to reducing instances of bullying within our community?
So, a few things. One, we just recently received the preliminary data from the Metro West Health Survey, which is a survey that all of our students take every two years. And due to the pandemic, it was disrupted, so they took it and we received, they took it in the fall, this fall, and we received it. And a similar question came up from a parent in the parent night, and it was a great one around bullying is, has increased and what are we doing about it? And it was a great question, and I actually had, based on some of the narrative and some of the information I had, I had a similar thought. The data from Seventh and Eighth and through Nine through Twelve, which are the students that take that survey, it basically asked three questions related to bullying. The first one is the instances in which you've been bullied over the last 12 months. The second one is, were you bullied on school property? And the third is, were you cyberbullied? And the first question, which talked about, have you been bullied in the last 12 months? It was within 2% of the 2018 data, which was interesting. The cyberbullying data, we've seen an increase, up 6%. So that's, that's an area where I would see concern. And our on-school leveled out, so the same percentage from three years ago. We, I think I mentioned our advisory, but I think the work we do, and I think this is part of the strategic planning on training our staff, training with our admin. We have a brand-new bullying policy, as you know. We recently, at our staff meeting, our admin meeting last week on Monday, we really spent time and processed the new policy and all the new changes with every principal and assistant principal during our administrative team meeting. We started there as a starting point so that the next stage, we can work with our staff to get them trained and then move into helping, training our students. And when I say train, I mean educate, and it can't just be a review of the definitions of bullying, but the plan, I had a meeting this morning with our middle school admin who planned to roll out more information during one of their May staff meetings and then have a plan over the next nine weeks after we get back from break to look at how they can continue to work with students through scenario-based topics and really look at, we purchased the Second Step SEL curriculum, which has modules on bullying, harassment, to really try to work with our students. What I've learned over time is, if you don't prepare and train and give staff time to process, it's really hard to implement with kids with fidelity in an effective way. And it's certainly an area that we want to continue to grow and be better at, but those are some of the plans. And then next year, we also, we have a program where our staff will be trained using a platform. We used to do, we have a Google Classroom, staff can go in, can read the policies. We do a lot of work with new hires. They talk about it during a staff meeting, but there's actually some, a training platform that's really Massachusetts-based that looks at all of the harassment regulations and bullying, and we're looking to roll that out for staff so that they can have a better understanding, and it's a better tool, it's video-based, and there's some really, there's some strengths to that. So I think our whole system, and I would want to emphasize that, our systems, we're currently looking at as a team and how we can continue to build those up and create systems that lead to better work. Final point, when I think about Seventh and Eighth and that data, the work needs to start younger so that as kids develop and move through our system. And I think that would relate to any topic, really, if we think about learning. But I don't think, when I see, when I talk to the principal at the high school and he talks about some of his goals for his schools and expectations for his students, I often will say, you know, because he carries it, and I want, you know, I want to continue to do better by our kids. And I say, you know, this is a system-wide thing where we need to do our best at the elementary and middle so that as they arrive, they're, you know, that work starts early, earlier and younger, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So my second question is really around staffing. So what we mean, we all hear about the great resignation in the, in all industries. People are moving and there's a lot of shift. We've, in the past, I'd say, what, three months, we've seen a lot of movement in Franklin in terms of the leaders as well. What is your plan to retain and attract educators and admin staff?
So, I've heard a lot about the great resignation too, and there's certainly components of movement, there's certainly movement around the districts that I'm familiar with. I don't know if we've seen the level that I would, because I had a similar prediction around that. I haven't seen, from my perspective in my seat that I currently have in the district, a great, like, the resignation that I'm hearing about for the district. But with that said, I think the, how we recruit, recruiting staff, retaining staff looks a few different ways. You know, we're currently really trying our best. We led through the pandemic, and I think our teachers did a phenomenal job really working with us. And I think about our leadership and how we were able to lead through there. It's clear, people are certainly stressed, and teachers are stressed and families, and we, I don't have a magic pill for burnout, and that came up somewhere else. But I do think the clearer we get around what our goals are, what we are doing, and what we're prioritizing, and also what we're not doing. I hear a lot from teachers around wanting to be clear on the goals that we focus on and try to really build out a plan that's predictable, uses up, so if we have goals around tier-one instruction, curriculum review, and DEI work, if we're thinking and we're planful about when those initiatives are going to take place, how they'll be supported, what are the outcomes and the goals, and it's really focused work. I've heard, you know, I've experienced in my own leadership when that's predictable for teachers and they know what to expect through the fall, through the spring, and it's, and it's clear on the rationale for why we're doing what we're doing and how we're going to do it. That alone, I experienced that as a principal, can really create a little more of a less frenetic environment where it's been a lot of frenetic, it's been frenetic leadership through the COVID pandemic because the rules kept changing and it kept. So I think people are looking for more stability, and I think that's a way that you retain, you retain staff. And also, I think relationships, when I think about leadership in general, in the military, you have ranks and that leads to authority. In education, leadership just means more responsibility to people is really what it comes down to. It's about people that you're working with and you're leading, and I think there's a huge distinction there. So that's not a parallel for the, for the Marines always, even though, you know, in the military, you care about your people. I just think there's a rank structure that ensures that. I think if you don't earn the respect of folks in other types of organizations, it's really hard to move things forward. So that would be, that'd be my answer to that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
What are things that surrounding school districts are doing that we are not and could serve as growth models for Franklin? And what are ways we could implement those things here?
So I, it's a very good question, Dave. We have a, we have a goal, and I, we have a few DLIs in the crowd, but we've had a goal where, for example, I'll use Medfield, where they do a design your learning day, they open it up to the public, to other districts, to provide a PD opportunity where people can, you can tuition in and pay for a seat to go. I've seen, Mendenupton has done this and a few other districts. We've had a long-term goal around, we really held a successful Build Your Own Curriculum PD Day and really got some positive feedback from staff around that. We look to implement pieces of that as well and move forward through our PD model. But I think that's an opportunity that other districts do that where I see a benefit for us. They also allow teachers from other districts to participate and facilitate lessons. So I feel like the learning that can take place, not just internally but from others, is an area where, that's just one example. I can speak from my own experience, and I'm not suggesting this because I don't want to get any teachers scared, but I've seen some benefit to analyzing a high school schedule and looking for opportunities there. So I'm not suggesting Franklin High teachers that we change your schedule on the first day of school next year, but I think it's been an ongoing discussion. When I was an AP and I was the person who did the scheduling in Aspen, we were limited and restricted by the composition of our staff, and we were just at those, at that time was really trying to make sure that we could offer US1 and not have 30 kids in it, right? We've constantly been battling these things. I think we've been restricted in ways, and there's a lot of great people with great ideas on how we can improve the system beyond me. But we've been, I know, we've been, we've, you know, you've heard this expression where we've really made some really positive things happen with schedule, but it's come at a really creative cost to try to make that happen. And I wonder about if we had the ability, could we look at our schedule and look for opportunities to build in more programming? I think about that example I gave of financial literacy and where it, for all kids, and how that could fit. We talked about advisory and how that might look. Concurrent enrollment's another area. We're fortunate to have a senior project, which is phenomenal. And if you haven't signed up, but you, or if you're available to be a judge for the senior project that will happen in the spring, it's phenomenal and the work that happens. And talk about an opportunity for kids to experience the real world. So I'm proud of those opportunities, but certainly, I recognize that other districts have other ways in which they approach the job that we're fortunate to be networked, each of us in our respective roles, and share ideas and would like, would like to bring ideas that are successful and would work for us back to the district as well. But that would be one example.
Thank you.
All right, so this question's about school culture. It's a three-parter.
Okay.
So the first part is what attributes of school culture are important to you? The second part, looking back, how have you improved school culture to reflect these attributes? And then looking forward, how might you ensure that positive culture is prevalent in every school in Franklin?
Great questions, okay.
No softballs for you?
No. My, my leader, my like personal core values are respect, trust, and accountability are the three, and compassion really are the four things that I try to live by. Those are some attributes. I think, you know, I think you build trust through accountability and really working with people, but trying to be, I learned through a mentor around being hard on the problem but kind of easier on the people when that's the case. And I've tried to kind of look at that on, how can we, can we be honest with each other and really try to confront things in a way that is dignified and really try to work through to get to solutions? So there's, there's that component. I feel as though relationships and listening and feeling heard, feedback I receive is, you know, whether I wanted to hear it or not, I really try to do my best to listen to what people are facing and try to look at ways in which we can work together to really approach things from a solution-oriented perspective. I think that helps build a culture that is positive. I will say, you can't have positive culture just for the sake of positivity. It has to be anchored in clear goals that are shared, and you have to have something to work towards if you're going to really have it. You can't have culture for the sake of culture. I think that's, that's actually a, can be a real downfall of a leader if they're not clear on what their goals are and what they want to all accomplish. You often hear about sometimes if there's goals, but they're not consistently followed, and that can actually erode culture in a building. Conversely, if you, if, only if you folks are doing it and they feel like they're the only ones kind of moving, moving the work for it. So I feel fortunate to be on the teams I've been involved with where there's tremendous accountability to one another, and I think that's, that's an area. The third part, positive culture, I think we have to look for opportunities. You know, we talk, we've talked about setting goals around social emotional learning for students and staff is one of our district goals, and there's no magic pill, and I'm not into gimmicks as far as like a gimmicky con- kind of approach to that. But being authentic around treating our staff, you know, as professionals and looking for opportunities to, to work with them and reward them where appropriate. And when I say staff, I mean our leaders, our teachers. And an example of that would be when we held our PD day and we built in time for them to collaborate with each other as professionals. That is a very basic example. But I was really surprised at the positive feedback from the surveys and the emails around, hey, you didn't just, we, not me, but we didn't just structure a day that had all learning. Like you wouldn't do this to a kid, right? All learning, 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 learning. Okay, good, boom, have a good day. Building in time to learn a concept and then actually meet with people who share a course, share a grade and say, okay, how does this look for us? And chunk it. That, that one, that's one example of like feeling, one, one person wrote, like they felt like they were treated like professionals. And we're given that opportunity and didn't feel like we were over their shoulder maybe necessarily. So that was, you know, born from the team and really trying to develop our educators, but provide time for them to collaborate as well. And I think that would be one example if I had one to, to share, so.
Thanks.
It created a positive moment in that particular piece. And I'm sure if you have enough of those moments and positive, similar with communication with the community, if you have enough positive inputs and people kind of get a sense, it's, it certainly can have a larger effect. It's not always about the one big thing you do, but it's what you do consistently over time and daily to make people feel valued and appreciate the work that they do and provide the support people need to do the best job they can.
Thanks.
I have a three-part question for you. What have you done to prepare yourself for the superintendency? What are the strengths that you bring to the position? And what would be your personal professional development plan were you to become the superintendent?
Megan, strengths, the last one was personal development and professional development plan. What was the second piece?
The second, what is the strengths that you bring to the position?
Okay.
And the third is, yeah, personal development, personal and professional development.
So as I mentioned earlier, I think my, one of my strengths is around developing relationships with the folks that I work with. And that comes from, I think, just a leadership style and a personal style that I've developed over time, trying to respect people's position and really try to support people. So I think relationships is one of the areas. The other piece is I'm a strategic thinker. An area where I would approach this position would really be to be thinking strategically around our goals. I feel as though the clearer we are with what we're doing, who's doing it, when it's happening, and how it's going to get done, I feel like has always served me well in my leadership style. In the principal forum, I had, there was, there was a bit of a, I could tell some smiles around how I communicate. There's oftentimes we'll all write like, this is the context, here it's going on, three things you need to know, or three. So I just feel like the clearer we get and really cut, really getting clear on what needs to happen or what they should be considering and then developing plans that are real and authentic. I think it also allows us to prioritize work and not feel, because often it can feel like everybody's work is a priority. And someone used this example with me around, we're constantly juggling balls in the air and some are made of glass and how do you keep them? The trick is I've added a layer to this. Every person thinks their ball is glass. So some are rubber, some are glass. So how do we really keep all the balls in the air? And I think the clearer we get with what we hope to accomplish in a year and how, and things can be multi-year. And we can start to project out what things will be accomplished in DEI curriculum work. You know, the pandemic's certainly shown us and through the MAP data, areas in which our students will need continued support. Our curriculum leadership team is really working hard to put plans together that are authentic and real around bolstering our tier-one curriculum. Review cycles, that's an area where we see tremendous opportunity. And I think we've mentioned this before, but that should continue around a multi-year plan to review curriculum. If you're an elementary teacher and every year you're, you're in the midst, you teach multiple subjects, that's a difficult task. But if we can start to chart out and create more long-term plans around that with predictability and what's to be accomplished in year one, two, and three of a curriculum review, it becomes more manageable. And I think that freneticness, if I've learned anything in my life, the less frenetic, I think about my home life when we're going to piano and this, and this, and this, the clearer your plan is, you know, keeping your house in order, the better, the better off you are. So that was that piece. And then professionally, I think there's pieces of the job when you take any role, there's things you don't know. And I don't pretend to know every component of a superintendency. But my commitment to this town and to you as a school committee and to our constituents, and most importantly, our students, I'm really committed to doing this job if I was selected, doing it to the best of my ability with honesty and integrity and transparency and really looking for ways in which I would continue to grow. And I'm not going to sit here and pretend that like I could master that position in a year. But I'm certainly committed to continuing to grow. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. What is your philosophy on delegating authority? How do you then maintain accountability?
So this ties into a little bit of a answer I gave earlier. I think you have to trust the people you work with to do the job. And accountability, I think, once again, the clearer we are with who's doing what, I think that really helps clarify that and eliminate that. I think in order to delegate, you have to believe and, and, and know that the person you're delegating a task to, this is like anything in education and life. You have to have the confidence that they can do it. And you have to create a psychologically safe environment where people feel okay to come back to you and say, I know you've delegated this to me, but I really want a little more clarity, if that was an example. Or how could I approach this? Because one thing that I learned from Dr. Hearn is she came from an assistant superintendent role. And she said, the one thing I would mention to you is, as you continue, I had taken an aspiring superintendent's course two years ago as part of preparation for that eventual opportunity. I took the assistant superintendent's learning seminar as well for the three years that, that they offer it. And you, in an assistant superintendency, a principalship, a directorship, you often have more specialized focus. And as a superintendent, you really have to have your eye and hand on all of it. You just can't go into the depth that you may be accustomed to. So I think that would be a huge shift for me. I can, let me know if anyone's smiling behind me. I can get into the weeds on some things that, that I think bandwidth-wise wouldn't be possible. And I think you have to trust and be super clear and honest about how you're, how you see that playing out and what type of feedback along the way. And building in opportunities for check-in when you delegate authority are huge. And once again, the relationships, the, the safer you've created an environment, you don't have to agree on everything, but certainly the safer the environment, the, the more opportunity there is for discussion about what's the best plan. I don't necessarily believe that I have the best solution to every single thing that's happening in the district, but certainly that's how I would frame, frame that work.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So now I just wanted to give everyone an opportunity. If you have any follow-up questions or comments, this is the time. So Camille, if you had any follow-up questions?
Is this follow-up questions?
For anything that he might have answered, you might have a question.
But it's not discussing?
No.
Okay. No, then I don't have any right now.
Okay. Dave?
No, thank you.
None, thank you.
I, you know, I'm a huge fan of the growth mindset initiative and philosophy. And so it's so good to hear so many of your answers included that, you know, willingness to grow, curiosity, eagerness to grow, you know, looking towards role models and those types of things. And also keeping, keeping your eye on these last couple of years because this has been a career goal for you for some time now. So sort of paying attention and looking at, at that role and taking the courses to sort of like ready yourself when the time is right. So, so as a new superintendent, I believe through MASSS, there's, is it a mentorship program or a new institute?
There's a, there's definitely a mentorship program offered. And I, I would have to check, but I think they, they, they have an annual institute, professional development opportunity. But certainly, there's a mentorship opportunity. And I know that new superintendents also are cohorted, I believe, for just professional learning.
Gotcha. So I think that's an important piece for anybody coming into the, any job new, is really having that support network of other people who have done it before. And, you know, being a superintendent in a district, you're isolated. You're the only one in the district. And so having that network of colleagues that, and I know Dr. Hearn had sort of explained to us over COVID, they, they got really close because they were, they were making these massive, sometimes life or death decisions, split seconds that affected hundreds, thousands of people. And nobody was happy. And so I think that she, she seemed like there was a lot of, like a lot of comfort in that, not, not feeling alone and working together and sort of working through those decisions together in a position that really is very isolated typically. And so I think that's something that probably moving forward, superintendents will be more communicative with each other possibly because of COVID. But also getting, getting into an institute or a mentorship program or something I think would be important for anybody taking on this role to really, there's going to be so much to learn in coming from all angles. And this would really add some structure. And as you've said a lot about clear goals, probably help sort of give an objective, goal-setting, you know, objective perspectives on some things that might seem a little bit less, less clear when you're working in the moment of it. So I think that's definitely something that we'd be looking for.
And if I, if I was selected, you know, I would certainly take advantage of those opportunities. And I think there's tremendous value in, in mentorship in general. But certainly, the quality of the MASSS, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the folks that work, our retired superintendents who've done tremendous work over their careers, they offer a lot of support. So I've been fortunate through the assistant superintendent coursework over the three years to meet a lot of those mentors already. And I, you know, if, if selected or appointed, I would certainly continue to want to grow in areas that folks could help me in, for sure.
Yes. And I, I expected that answer because really you, you embedded it within your, sort of the story of how you got here, starting from, you know, your career in the Marines and talking about growth mindset, all through those roles, talking about, you know, looking towards mentors and really the relationship-based piece. And so I just wanted to, to say it out there explicitly. Thanks.
Thanks.
I wanted to say, I really liked the reference to, you know, respecting your colleagues and staff and the, you know, clear communications. Those are very important. Thank you.
I just had a follow-up question.
Sure.
To a question that Elise had asked about the working with local municipal officials. You had mentioned revamping the district's communication efforts. I was wondering what you, what suggestions you might have? I know that we hear on the school committee that there's too much email, but also not enough email. So I'm just wondering what ideas you might have?
So I would, I think it's an opportunity to take a step back and not assume everything we're doing is working and adding more. But I think that's a perfect example of what types of things are we communicating and how? And what do people need in an email that's important that they get? It's a sign-up, it's a date that you need them to, you need to, there's certain information that you want to make sure people have in an inbox and it sits there. And then there's other, there's legs to this. What do I need that's more static that I should be able to go to the website and very easily find information about? And that might mean adding information that's more forward-facing. I'm thinking specifically about some of our student procedures. As we develop our bullying intervention plan, which is now incorporated the new policy language, those pieces need to be readily available so people can see kind of what's happening. Separate leg is how are we leveraging social media? Our families use it. We held a social media night about how, how that's communicated. But I think there are, there are information, these are those positive deposits that it's not required that they read them, it's not necessary that it's email, but how can we help ourselves? And I think I'd have to start modeling that because I mentioned in, in one of the groups, if I'm only sending stuff out about the TikTok challenge, then I'm known as the TikTok challenge person. And it's the scary stuff and it's the, you know, huggy-wuggy and whatever else. And I feel like there has, has to be opportunities to, 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 to put positive deposits and start to say, a parent made a suggestion in, in the parent form around, I think having older kids in elementary mentor younger kids would be important. And then another parent who happened to work in the district said, oh, well, I have an example of that. And in the meeting, talked about our fifth graders walk our kindergarteners out to the bus. And I think, if you asked any elementary school, those exist. But it's clear, it was, to me, it was a communication issue, not a practice issue. And I wonder about what we can do to help ourselves in that particular area. The final piece is just the goals and being transparent around how we're kind of moving the work forward. And, and that's more about just what do we intend to accomplish this year in these areas and how? And maybe not the, the, the complete detail of like what PD is happening on this day, but really clear about what we hope to accomplish by the end of a year in these particular areas and start to frame things out in multiple years. I think is an area too where it could take, keep us focused so people know kind of what we're working on. So that would be just, just a few examples, but I'm sure there are others that I haven't referenced.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I just wanted to give you this opportunity before we wrap things up, if there was anything that we didn't touch upon that you maybe wanted to speak to?
I just would want to impress upon everyone who's watching and folks here and you as a committee that, you know, as someone who's been in the assistant superintendent role and worked through to develop some of the goals we have, I'm also, I also recognize that we are primed and we may need to change direction on a few things. I consider myself a reflective leader. And I just want it to be known that I'm someone who, I'm paying attention and I want to make sure that whatever we're working towards, you know, is cognizant of the group. And ultimately, a superintendent has to make decisions to move things forward. But certainly, I just want it known that I reflect on what direction we need to move. And it's constantly in my mind on how we can get there and how to support. And we have a phenomenal team of people who work in Franklin, who are super dedicated. And I'm committed to this town, I'm committed to this work. And I would welcome the opportunity to continue to lead in this, in this district. And I just want to thank you all for considering me and, and allowing me to come tonight to answer some of these questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giar. So thank you, everyone, very much for coming out tonight in person and viewing at home. Community engagement is very important and your participation is appreciated. Again, thank you, everyone, who attended the April 7th meet and greet sessions, those who have sent in their thoughts and responded to the surveys. In terms of next steps, at our April 26th meeting, the school committee will deliberate in public and will go forward with a vote on the candidate. I encourage the community to continue to stay tuned and informed. And we will continue to update everyone throughout the public process. So at this time being 6:10, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Giar.
Thank you, Lucas.
You had a minor, minor, but in terms of time, but not minor overall because it was a significant impact for the street.